I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware, if there is an emergency, please exit to the left, please take the stairs, and do not take the elevator. In addition, these meetings are recorded by a secretary for the purpose of a record, so when you come to the podium, please state your name and address each, when you come to the podium. In addition, we'll follow the items in the order of the agenda. There's extra copies at the door. We'll have, when the case is called, we'll have the applicants present the case, and then the board will be able to ask them questions, and if it's a public hearing, we'll open it up to the public to come up and state any comments they have, and then we'll give the applicant a chance to come back and respond to any of the concerns that may have been raised. In addition, once all the input has been completed and all the questions are satisfied, the case will be closed to the public, and the board will then move on with the decision. No further input will be allowed after that point. And with that, could we please call the first case?
Sure. PB 1705-1, upon the matter of request by Pastor Row Associates acting as agent for North American Stone for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a 4,900-square-foot addition on premises 1358 East Ridge Road in a C business district.
All right, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Matthew Moore from Pastor Row Associates. On behalf of North American Stone, we're coming before you today requesting preliminary and final site plan approval for, actually, a plus-minus 4,760-square-foot addition. As a result of the workshop that one of my colleagues came and ran through with you guys the other week, we shortened the building from the original 70-by-70 proposal down to 70-by-68, so that the addition is entirely in the commercial District C. The building's purpose, it's being requested because currently it's a milled-over area in the back where the owner stores granite countertops, and he would like to be able to store those and process them indoors. So essentially, they're just trying to make an outdoor storage area and indoor storage area, so there's going to be no increase in traffic or employees or anything along those lines, just, just storage area. They are proposing to add three building-mounted lights in the back there, just to provide some lighting in the back corner. And then, other than that, there's really not too much going on in the way of changes. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to deal them.
With that, I'll open it up to the board for anyone who has questions. Mr. Evelyn, would you like to start?
I've got no questions at this time.
Mr. Reed?
I noticed when I was out there, there's two dumpsters currently in the milling area. What's the plan for where those are going to go, and what's going to happen with those when the addition's done?
I believe they'll probably move back to the, back into the corner, the end of the asphalt, proposed asphalt area, and just be pushed off into the corner there. But I'm, to be honest, I'm not 100% sure what the owner plans to do with those. They very well could be actually moved inside as well.
Okay. I don't know what everybody thinks, but that might be something we want to discuss further and try to really lock in, because, I mean, they were, I think one of them was like a 20-yard dumpster. It's not like we're talking a little five-yard, you know, smaller unit, so that might be something we want to discuss here.
So I apologize. Where are the dumpsters? Where are they going?
Not sure. Applicant kind of said maybe towards the back of the side of the building.
Yeah, they'll literally be in the back or inside the building. The owner actually hasn't specified where he wants those yet.
Is that going to be filled with, like, leftover granite?
Yeah.
You know, basically what your drops were dropped, cut-offs, and what you're manufacturing?
Wood balings, you know, saw some miscellaneous stuff in there.
Excess pallets, you know. Nothing corrosive or smelly or nasty, just...
Okay.
But, hang on, it's still going to be closer to the neighbor's property, right? The neighbor to the north?
No. No, the building is going over the existing milling storage area. They're just converting it. It's not going to be any closer to the...
I'm talking about the dumpsters.
Yeah, no, they won't be any closer to the north.
Yes, today, the dumpsters were approximately in this area when I went out there.
Right, where the building is.
Where you're pointing?
So there, if you look at sheet two of three here, C2, there's sort of like a little, almost like a gate symbol on the right-hand side of that rear fence, kind of like a swing gate symbol.
Right.
There are two dumpsters kind of currently today back in that general area.
Yeah.
So that's where the building footprint will be, you know, up to the setback line or whatever, so it might be tight over there. Just thinking about waste haulers getting in there and all that stuff. And I think before, when we, when we talked at the workshop, we were talking about not having anything back in the green area. You know, the intent was that everything would be within the millings or within the building, so I don't think it leaves a lot of space for, I think, what was maybe a five- or a 10-yard and a 20-yard dumpster was out there when I was there today.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm not 100% sure what they plan on doing with the dumpsters, but I'm sure the owner is more than comfortable making it a condition that the dumpsters will be placed no closer to where they are now to the property to the north, where they will be out of sight and easily accessible for removal. That's only fair.
Okay. Another question I had, it shows on the third sheet here on the utility sheet, C3. I noticed, and I see it on this drawing, there's an existing electric pole with some overhead electric that goes to the north. You can see the pole off to the left-hand side or the west side of the proposed building, about two-thirds of the way back.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that those electric lines that were even on that go to anything, but they'd be really close to the edge of that building if they need to maintain. I'm not sure what that is, but probably is something that should be looked at, because the electric lines headed north that were on there.
Yeah, and that'll all be addressed with our G and E. Before we can, we get underway, everything will be taken care of. But from what I understand, there's not any issue with it, I don't know, I have an issue with it.
My only other question was that zoning issue that we talked at workshop about, and it sounds like that's been addressed, so that's, that's good. I'm happy with that. Thanks.
I, I don't have anything aside from that dumpster. I think that it's getting close to the neighbor. If you're going to put it in what we were to understand were green spaces, and it's not like it's paper that you're dumping, it's heavy stone that you're dumping, so I can imagine that that's going to be intrusive to the guys to the north.
Yeah, no, it will, it will not be in the green space. That is intended to be just green space.
As long as we can do that, I'm fine with that, then. I'm good.
So you're thinking conditions, or, only because I don't, I don't ever...
If he's agreed to it already, yeah.
I don't recall ever approving something without knowing where the dumpsters are, so I'm asking.
So that's something that the board can apply that as a condition, that it be located or sighted outside of? Or create the condition, you know, some, some threshold, and it certainly could be that town, with town staff approval, that we ensure that it's where it's supposed to be, so that it's not located in the green space.
I, I'd venture a guess that if he's going to have a dumpster full of granite and marble, he's not going to want to park it on green space, on the grass, because if they came in to haul that thing away, they'll never be able to get it out of the depressions. So, I, you know, I mean, I think, I don't think a condition's a bad idea, but I would...
Just to ensure it's going to go where...
Yeah, I would, I would, I would venture a guess it wouldn't be a problem, but, you know, trust, verify, right?
Mr. Hobbs, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Mr. Huber?
I don't have any questions, but I do share the concerns about the dumpster.
Thank you. I was just going to ask the board members to make sure that their mics are nice and close, so that, thank you.
Any other general questions, or open it up to the public? You might, might not want to go too far. If anybody's here from the public who would like to speak? Okay, with that, I have to close the public here. Okay, thank you, unless there's anything else you want to add?
Um, no, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, well, hold on, we're still going to have to go through the seeker and the motion. But you can, you can sit down, unless we call you back up. And I apologize, you did see the letter from the fire marshal? Is this for... Oh, it's not, sorry.
Fire marshal. Seeker here.
Yes. You did see the letter from the fire marshal?
No, I did not.
Take a look at that before we, we go much farther. Okay, thank you. Any concerns? So since this is seeker, is there somebody who would like to make a motion on seeker?
I'll go ahead on PB... Let me get a, sorry, PB 17...
Before you do that, there is a short form, in case you...
05-1, that we do a unlisted seeker finding.
And now, then, just need to indicate what your determination of significance would be, and that would be either a negative declaration?
Oh, I'm sorry, and it's a negative declaration, sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a second?
A second.
So, in regards to PB 1705-1, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. And there is one absent. I pass the seeker. So now, we need a motion for the application.
In regards to PB 1705-1, upon the matter of request by Pastor Row Associates acting as agent for North American Stone for preliminary slash final site plan approval to construct a plus-minus 4,900-square-foot addition on premises 1358 East Ridge Road in a C business district. I move it as approved with the condition that no dumpsters be placed any farther north on the property than the edge of the existing millings. Shown on, I don't know what map that was, C1?
C102.
I just have a staff question. Would it be easier if we contained the dumpster into the C district portion of the property? You don't allow it to go into the residential part of the district?
That would be probably easier that it's located on the portion of the lot that's zoned C business, because the, the R1 zoning doesn't really even contemplate the placement of dumpster unless it's for residential hauling for a day or two.
And by default, that'll get us what we want, so I think that's a good...
So, how do you want me to state it? So, the dumpster would be subject to...
Would be placed in the C portion of the property, the commercial...
The portion of the site zoned C business.
Yeah.
And just for a matter of clarification, I don't know if this really matters, they changed the building size, so it's, it's 4,760 square feet, not 4,900?
Do you want to do plus or minus 4,800, just to give them, if they decide to bump out? They can't go further north, otherwise they're in the wrong zoning district.
Correct.
Plus or minus 4,800 feet for, period?
Square feet.
So nothing around it being placed north, it's all taken care of by locating it in the portion of the site deemed C business, correct? Plus or minus 4,800 square feet for the length, is that the length?
The square footage.
Square footage. Okay, with, are you okay with those additions, Mr. Evelyn?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. And there's one absent. With that, it passes, and thank you for doing business in a round quick.
Hi, thank you for having me. Appreciate your time.
ZB 1705-2, upon the matter of request by Fitzgerald Engineering acting as agent for the Holland Trotta Project for preliminary and final site plan approval to redevelop existing parcels to construct two new buildings, one 6,700 square feet, the other 2,600 square feet, with related site improvements on premises 1238, 1258, and 1268 East Ridge Road, all in the C business zoning district.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, well, actually, gentlemen of the board right now. I just wanted to present this evening, my name is Ray Trotta from the Holland Trotta Project. Fitzgerald is our engineering firm that's internal in our office, but we are the design manage, management firm representing the developer on this project that's at the corner of Portland and East Ridge Road. It consists of... Can you hear me? If you could see over here, it consists of three parcels, 1238, 1258, and 1268. 1238 is the current Bruegger's Bagels, 1258 was the former print shop, and 1268 was a residential house that was converted into, I think it's a dog grooming business right at the moment.
Excuse me for a second. Can everybody from the board see, or does he need to move it back a little?
I can turn this...
Yeah, just, that's perfect.
If everybody could see. Is that better?
Thank you.
It's good.
No problem.
Okay.
So, we have been looking at this parcel and, and seeing what the, the best way to handle a development at this corner, which is a very nice corner, that we're contemplating putting a urgent care and also a, basically, Aspen Dental in, in one building, and then a quality casual restaurant in the other. So basically, what we were proposing is we looked at a density analysis, and we're going from currently 9,200 square feet up to 9,300 square feet. So the net change in square footage is virtually 100 square feet, but there was three buildings, and now there will be two. Two, two will be housed with the Aspen and Five Star, which, which Five Star Urgent Care is affiliate of Aspen Dental is the parent company. And then the other, the other restaurant is kind of the cat's out of the bag, that, that's a Qdoba Mexican Grill. So that will be, that will be similar to quality casual southwestern dining. It is not a drive-through, by the way. With that being said, what, we came in and talked to some key individuals in the town, and then obviously in the workshop meeting, we developed a plan that accomplished quite, quite a few different things. First of all, right here is a current, quite large in-and-out curb cut, and what we wanted to do for the circulation is we wanted to combine these three properties, so there was circulation throughout, and also maintain just two curb cuts where they are existing, and close off the third. In doing so, what it, what it does, it doesn't create as much congestion at the corner of Portland and Ridge, and we were concerned about that, and we would be circulating through the site. When, this, this right here is kind of a, a little bit of my chicken scratch, that when we sat down with the town, just to, just to kind of go through some key items that I was going to bring to the latest plan that we're presenting this evening, that addresses those key items. In those items, one of which was pedestrian, pedestrian circulation. In pedestrian circulation, the thought was to, A, have circulation from Ridge Road. Just as a footnote, the sidewalk actually stops right here currently, and there is no sidewalk down the Portland Avenue side. So what we, what we went over in the workshop is it probably made sense to tie into Ridge. Also, there was some discussion of, there was a liking to the recent-developed Walgreens that had a corner connection, corner sidewalk, that came into the site. So what we did is we, we extended the existing sidewalk off a ridge, brought in the first pedestrian connection into the Aspen and Five Star. We also brought in another connection from further down Ridge directly into the restaurant. And in doing so, there was a concern to tie in the two restaurants, so when you're circulating the site from pedestrian access, what we did is we have these cross, crosswalk areas. In, in discussions, we were talking about first striping those, and a couple of the board members brought up that they would like to have a little bit more than that. So this cross-hatched area is representing a stamped asphalt, that, so there is a transition in color and material. You know, as far as texture, not as much, because we were worried about if we did pavers or whatnot, you know, a snowplow would come through and bang them out or whatnot. So what we will have is you'll clearly be able to see these, they're not just painted, this will be a stamped asphalt that will be, and, and we could work with, we could work with some internal members of the town on, if, if they have a specific pattern preference or whatnot, because it depends on the stamp. You could get brick, you could get stone, paver, look, whatever, whatever you like, and we'd be amenable to that. The other, the other comment was, we showed a dumpster in this area, and the comment, we, we were debating ourselves where to put the dumpster, and there was a concern that that dumpster, even though these are rental houses at this property right here, would be a concern that, you know, 5:00 in the morning, a, a dumpster gets picked up or whatever, the noise that's created from there. So what we did is we moved it to the backside of the restaurant, and we also put, we're putting a masonry retaining wall around it at, at the town's request. So now, the building itself will shelter it from noise and exposure, so you really won't see, see the dumpster from the adjacent properties. Obviously, you'll see it from Ridge Road, but when you see it from Ridge Road, it's a masonry enclosure anyway, so you're really not seeing the container itself. Couple other things that we talked about was, I'll get into a little bit of lighting, there was a concern of where a light was located, and also a recent concern that this back area, to make this work, the grade actually goes down, and the bakery over here is actually significantly lower than this site. So to create this back parking area, we actually have this long retaining wall that's there. And just before the meeting, we discussed on, we'd be completely amenable as part of the approval, we're not showing it right now, to put a fence on top of that, so kids don't, you know, run up the backside of the wall or something, something of that nature, and just from a safety and also a privacy concern as well. We have no issue of putting some type of fencing, whether board-on-board or whatever they, the board would like, or we could make it subject to review with key internal staff. Let me flip to the next page here. One of the things I brought up, that was brought up before, is street scape. We talked about, there was a concern that the crab apples were not the most desirable tree, and from assault tolerance and, and from longevity and for maintenance. So what we did is we, we actually had a couple of gum, the black topello trees, which are a gum tree that were actually on the site already, and we were showing one. So what we did is we went across the board, and the other large trees, we went with, with the gum tree. So it is very salt tolerant, and actually, they're designed for street scape, so, so this would, would be very appropriate for, for this application. This is kind of, if you could see it from here, this is what the full-out growth looks of them, they have a reddish color, they change their beautiful foliage... of them, they have a reddish color, they change their beautiful foliage, and the changing of the seasons as well. One of the concerns, if you will, was twofold. Our original submission, which is good, it showed all the foot candle of all the detail of the grid of each individual, but what didn't show up is because it was so busy, the contours didn't show up. So, what I did is I cleaned up the plan twofold. First of all, this light, which was a concern, that it was right at the window of an existing property, we shifted it off, so it's, and we discussed this, is that it's at the corner of the building. So, the concern was that if they look up, they're looking right into the fixture, even though they're shielded. So, now, it'll be at the corner, and it'll be offset to the side. We also, one of the comments was, I added in here, it was kind of hard to see from the lighting vendor what the difference between the different lights were, so I put in the brackets on here, that the first light is, it was a difference in lighting shield, and you could see from the contours, one of the lights, even though they're almost identical, the shielding, one gives a wide, and one gives a more square contour. So, one is more uniform square, and one is longer and rectilinear. And that was the difference. I didn't even know that answer, what you're talking about, because they were so close, but that is the difference, and you could see it pretty clearly when you look at the contours now between the two. These, just by the way, the contours that are shown on here are two point five foot candle, is the outside, and right around the fixture itself is five. So, it's just, if you see that like black line that's right around the fixture, that's five, and the two point five is the outermost contour that's shown on here. You'll notice that, one of the questions you may have is that now that we took the foot candle factors off of here, it looks like there's no lights at all in between there. That's not the case, it just dwindles down to there's one foot candle across the board. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody could see that there's no flooding off-site at, off-site, I'm sorry, and these are two point five foot candle. One of the things that, I'm gonna skip over this one because it's actually shown, these are actually the building dimensions, but I'm gonna skip over to the sheet, which was distributed to the board. That over there, this one's a black and white version, but that over there is a color version, so you could see exactly what the, and part of your package was to see exactly what the buildings are gonna look like as far as materials. You could see the Aspen has a combination of Ephesus up top to brick at eight foot, and then below the brick is actually a stone water table, and obviously storefront aluminum glazing. The canopies, so they have the fabric awnings, which are the blue that are on there, well, actually, I'm sorry, the red that's on there, the coping is the blue. And also, the Qdoba, if you will, if I could come over here, is actually showing this metal screening, and more of a contemporary metal screen that's at the corner. I distributed, and I literally just got them a half an hour before the meeting, and your package is actually a materials board that gives you the Ephesus colors, it gives you the brick sample. I tried to get the actual brick sample, but we couldn't get them in time, even though we ordered them two weeks ago with the vendors. So, what I did is I actually gave you a sample board, so you could look at a bigger detail of which each item is. I don't have the samples from Qdoba, but I'd be more than willing to share them with staff later. I did request them, they would be coming out of Denver, and I asked them for their details on the same thing that Aspen and Five Star gave us, but they were unable to produce those in that fashion. But I will give them, obviously, prior and part of building permit as well. One of the things, this is just another, that's the other rendering from a different angle, you could see it on this one right here, and it's in color on the board right there. But this is shooting from the Qdoba side and going across. So, you have more of a traditional look. I mean, if you've seen an Aspen Dental before, the Aspen has more of the elliptical top cornice that's on the parapet. By the way, with that parapet, it shields all the rooftop units, none of them are seen on either building, so there's a parapet on either building, so you will not see the rooftop units. And then, Qdoba has more of a contemporary, kind of urban, I would say, modern urban feel to it, and it's got a nice transition. The transition is actually more between the two in color than style, I would say, but Qdoba has a specific, I guess, call it a hip look, and then Aspen and Five Star are more traditional. One of the items in your package that you have this evening is, we received comments from the town engineer, which were all addressed. Basically, the gist of the comments were labeling utilities on the survey plan, asking if there was a sanitary sewer easement, which there was not, but we will establish one, and it is shown on the plan. Where the curbing would be, there was a question on some hatched area that we corrected in front of the retaining wall. There was a discussion back and forth between the dry well slash, do we tie into the sewer? And the county DOT wanted to go back to the dry wells, so it ultimately went back to dry wells. So, sorry about that. The lighting, we obviously addressed that item, and then the under drain, we labeled it as the four inch under drain, it's right on the plan. And a lot of these items were questions that, at the time, the engineer did not have the SWIP report, which we consequently sent the entire SWIP, and they had a chance to review that. One of the items in your package, that was a question of the DOT as well, was we prepared a complete traffic analysis report of this development with a negligible change, excuse me, between the two developments, especially because we had a drive-through before, and now we do not have a drive-through. So, the net change was minimal, if any, and is all part of the summary, and our traffic engineer stated that accordingly, and addressed it to John Raymond at the County Transportation Department. Questions he had were on SWIP, which we prepared for them, it was on the dry wells, which I went over. He had a lot of labeling things, like the width of the driveway and whatnot, pretty standard comments, some of the details, we had his standard details, and he said if we're not using them, take them off the sheet, that kind of stuff. There also, signature block was one of them, which we obviously addressed, and the utility sheet easement. The only other thing was, they asked us to, there's a thirty-five mile per hour speed sign to relocate that, obviously, because we're gonna be closing that area and opening up some landscaping, so we'll relocate it accordingly with their standards. Other than that, I believe every, that we know of, of course, every town comment has been addressed, every county comment has been addressed. We have addressed, just from internal discussion, some informal from the work sessions and whatnot, from the impetus of the project, and we're just looking forward to build a pretty successful project here.
Thank you. You're welcome. With that, I'll turn it over to the board. Mr. Eubert, do you have any questions at this time?
Yeah. One of my questions is, on the...
Thank you.
On the, on the site plan, it looks like the sidewalk stops at the crosswalk on the corner, and we had talked a little bit about extending the sidewalk along Portland Avenue, and I didn't know if there was any movement on that issue, or what the challenges might have been there. I'm wondering if Mr. Eubin could pass the elevation of the Qdoba down, just so we could all get a better look of it.
Absolutely.
And is there, there is no signage, in-and-out signs near the, sometimes restaurants will put those, or maybe there's arrows that get painted on the, I don't know, on the pavement to let vehicles know where they're coming in and out? And we talked briefly about decorative lighting, and I don't know, I know that you've got a serious thing about the number of candles and things like that, so I don't know if that's gonna cause a whole problem to do decorative lighting.
Well, there's a couple answers to your questions. That is very astute of what you just said, is to reach the lighting intensity levels, to have LED lights, and to have them not projecting forward with a decorative light, that's a challenge.
Lot of factors there.
So, I could tell you, we solved everything except the decorative light.
Fair enough.
I would be open to looking at different opportunities of submittals, but right now, we solved all the design problems, the only thing that would be out there is the aesthetic. That's the first, actually, answer to your last question. We did discuss the potential of bringing this down, but it would be a sidewalk to nowhere, and that's the reason why we kept it in, and we talked about, just like Walgreens, is having more of a grand corner entrance, and what we thought was the best thing is just to extend it, this little portion, and tie right into here, and for two reasons. First of all, we didn't want a sidewalk to nowhere. Second of all, we didn't want to get into too much right-of-way work on the actual sidewalk, because you could see this is a larger sidewalk that goes right to the corner. So, what we did is we stubbed it in and connected it, that small portion, because that's just, it's an easier approval process with, to get this in, rather than putting, you know, a big ornate sidewalk that's right there. So, we were addressing, again, we were addressing as much as we possibly can in a logical standpoint, but we didn't want to create another issue going down. As far as the striping, I have no problem working with internal staff on putting in-and-out arrows and whatnot, we could coordinate that. I mean, honestly, it's not a cost issue, it's more of a, some towns and jurisdictions think that it's too busy, and others think that it's good to have it, so either way, we're fine.
I don't really have a strong, I was kind of just interested in what your perspective on the matter was, so I was just interested to see what you had to say.
It's a good, I guess the perspective is, it's not a huge driveway opening apron, so I don't believe it'll cause an issue, but if you want the striping, it could go either way. Usually, where you want the striping is if you have multiple choices, and what I mean is you're gonna go across, you're gonna go right, you're gonna go left. You're either going right or left here, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory and wide enough that there shouldn't be any conflicts. I mean, if someone's gonna drive over to this side by putting a stripe there, I don't know if it's gonna stop them or whatnot. But I don't have any issue with putting a dividing line either in there.
I think that you did a really great job addressing so many of the comments that were thrown around at workshop, you know, especially with the landscaping and the crosswalks. I was really excited when I saw the plans come back.
Thank you very much. We aim to please. Mr. Hobbs, I know you just received the drawings, would you like us to come back?
I just got one question for you. I noticed there's one spot for a dumpster. Is that going to service all three locations?
Yeah, the answer is yes, and it's a larger dumpster, so it is a double-sized, it's two parking spaces wide. So, we actually ended up taking, we put it at an angle, and you notice how it's striped on the other building, so in putting it here, we were concerned about the approach, even though it's a front-loaded dumpster, that we didn't want the truck clipping the building or clipping a parked car, so that's why they're striped right across there. But it will service both of them, and we feel it'd be sufficient.
And then, with the restaurant, is there going to be like a cooking oil hopper outside for deep frying oil?
It should not.
So, okay.
It should not, no.
All right, good.
They do have it changed once in a while, but there's not, I've never seen one on these type restaurants.
Some restaurants, they get that big hopper of oil outside, you know?
Their style, I don't know if you've ever been in a Chipotle or a Mo's, it's that style, it's quality casual, so it's more fresh food that's in a cafeteria, you know, pickup type, so it's, we're not talking fast food here, we're talking more quality casual.
That's all the questions I got.
Thank you. So, I was just curious, how are you on parking?
We are sufficient on parking, we had to lose a couple spots to get there. There's two things on parking. I believe we're a little bit over the town requirement, but we're under the retailer's requirement. So, we got the retailers to buy in to less parking, and also even losing a couple of spots to move the dumpster, because we really couldn't pick them up. So, but they lost a couple more spots from the first submission, and so we should be sufficiently parked, is the question, is the answer.
There's a few spots that I was looking at. So, the first is, as you first enter, I guess it would be Qdoba's parking lot?
Yep.
That first spot looks kind of close to the entrance. Is that any kind of danger that we should be concerned about?
It shouldn't be any kind of danger, because the only way you would go is to back up to internal the parking, it wouldn't be to pull in there, but I guess if it was a concern with the town, and you wanted to stripe that first spot, we can make that a condition of approval.
Somebody pulls into it frontways, and then they back up, somebody could be pulling in from the street, but I don't know how we determine if that's safe or not, but just visually, it looks like a concern to me, and I didn't know if we could afford to lose a parking space there or not.
Do we have parking calks anywhere, as far as required and what's provided?
Yes, it is actually...
Up here someplace.
Salt standards.
Okay, yep, I got it.
Yep.
What is it on?
C three? Top middle?
Yeah, there it is.
So, the math on here says that the required onsite is sixty parking spaces, and ninety-three parking spaces have been proposed.
And like I was saying, it's one thing of the town requirement, and the other for the retailers themselves. Two things, well, I say retailers, but this is business and this is assembly, two things that happen here is traditionally, on a urgent care, if they have like an epidemic or something like that, and people are here longer, it starts to consume some of the parking, and that's why their requirements are, and their longer turnovers, if you will. And the second thing is obviously the restaurant, we don't want to have any conflicts with, you know, the restaurant getting too busy and not having enough parking spaces. I don't have an issue as a condition of approval of losing that first spot, if it's a concern. It's a twenty-four foot drive aisle behind it, so there should be adequate room, but in all fairness, Ridge Road East is a pretty busy road, so I don't have an issue with losing that first spot, or, actually, probably, it'd probably be better than losing it and striping it, you know, and having it just a striped spot, so people could pull in there.
Right, I would always rather have green space, but I think striping would be a second best, if that works.
Either way, either way, it's completely fine.
Okay, so then I'll go to my other concern. Over on the left-hand corner, where you put the stamped pavement?
Yep.
Those two parking spots, I'm just looking at them, look awful tight to each other, the two corners.
They should, they should be designed fine, but I understand visually what you're saying. Keep in mind that this is still gonna be stamped asphalt, so it's a change in color, and, but it's still asphalt, so you're backing up on the asphalt. But if you wanted to, they're really, I guess we could, we could lose...
Well, I'm not asking, I would, I'll defer to the town. It looks tight to me, but...
It looks like there's clearance to back out straight, and because the drive aisle in both directions is fairly generous, you can, you could back out reasonably to then make the turn and clear the car, because of the L shape. If it had been on a diagonal, and would create a difficult backward movement, and I think it's gonna become a comfort thing, somebody's not gonna park there if they don't feel comfortable having to back out quite a bit before they can make their turn out.
So, before we finish, there's one more.
Sure.
On the corner of the Qdoba, so I guess it would be east bottom corner there, where you put the stamped concrete? So, the whole reason you did the stamped concrete there on the corner was so that people would know they could walk there, right?
Correct.
So, it looks to me like the parking space, if somebody's parked there, there's gonna be parking on where they would walk potentially, because I don't see the depth, are these the same?
Are you talking this one or this one?
The corner one, that one. I'm sorry, nope, the other one.
Oh, this one over here. Keep in mind, this width is doubled, it's actually ten-foot wide sidewalk that's on that side, so it's a quite wide area.
No, I'm worried more about on the driving side, where you have the stamped.
Talking like the rear tire, like presumably would be the rear passenger tire kind of impinging upon, or the bumper impinging upon that stamped walkway?
Correct.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because I couldn't tell.
Oh, we can shift that down a little bit, I understand what you're saying, we could shift it down. I could address that with the...
Okay, and I'll defer to the town or the rest of the board on the two corner ones, I just, it looked tight to me. I wouldn't park in them myself, but if you see me drive, you would understand, but...
I think I agree with you on the one by the entrance drive. I think that seems like a potential problem, if somebody were trying to back out, somebody trying to pull in real quick off of Ridge. The one on the...
The one on the upper corner there, and what would be that, the southwest corner, I think that one's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah. For the design standpoint, I think that's okay.
It is pretty standard.
You feel fine, right, Carrie? All right. Then my other questions are, I noticed Mr. Huber asked about signage, but there is nothing proposed yet. So you're going with two entrances and exits.
Correct.
And then you also have parking in the back, so I'm assuming you're gonna have some kind of onsite signs to tell people that.
Well, I don't think there's any reason to have, you know, additional parking in the rear, because you're gonna visually see it as soon as you drive down. It's not that far of a distance that you're going. The length of the building is only 66 feet, so that shouldn't be.
I was thinking more for the people that are coming in from Portland Avenue. Or are you thinking they're not gonna come?
I don't foresee it as an issue. If there's no parking spots here, they're gonna drive over here and see it.
Okay.
You know, and keep in mind that we're high, and adjacent properties are low. So if we're the opposite, I would agree with you. But since we're sitting higher, you're actually gonna see that area.
Okay. And then I did notice all these no-stopping signs. Can you tell me more about on Ridge Road? There's two no-stopping signs? I imagine that means no traffic stop? What are those?
Yes. Yeah, that's a DOT, that was a DOT, you think?
Are those actual signs?
Yeah, there was, I believe that was a requirement of the county, that we wouldn't just put those there. So there, as far as.
I believe they're on the state property, right?
They're not existing today, right? Obviously, so.
Correct, correct. I believe that was something that came up in the comments.
Okay. And then just one other general comment. You said, or two, I'm sorry, two more things. You said that proposed urgent care, or you used a different word when you started, then it's definitely gonna be an Aspen or an urgent care.
No, no, no. It's a, the Aspen is a dental, the Five Star is urgent care. It's one building with two businesses in it.
But are they definitely?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They are, when I say propose, I apologize. The whole project is proposed.
Right.
It was intertwined.
And Qdoba is definitely on the.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, when you look at this, I'm just looking at it saying, so you got Aspen Dental looking out, is this the actual, I looked at the pictures, it was hard to tell. Would this be considered the back of the restaurant, then?
This.
For the Qdoba? No, where the dumpster is, on the side where the dumpster is?
Yes, this would be, well, this is the back of the restaurant, so it's the back corner.
So it's the back corner.
Back corner. So basically, front of house is in this area, and back of house, where the actual kitchen is, is back here. So this would be a door off the kitchen.
So basically, there would be windows that aren't necessarily looking on the dumpster, that's the back of the restaurant.
Yeah, that's the back, that's back of house. So basically, it's, I would consider like a two-thirds, one-third. The front two-thirds are public, the back one-third is back of house.
And then Aspen will be facing it, but you're gonna make it a concrete enclosure and.
Correct, correct. So you wouldn't, I mean, you're not gonna see anything that's visually distracting, if you will.
Okay. Those were my only questions.
What's the separation from the restaurant and the outside seating made out of?
From here to here, you mean?
Yeah, is that like a wooden fence? What is it?
They actually have like a metal fence, and they actually, I haven't seen the details for this one. They actually tagged a term, they call it a fench, which is a fence and a bench put together. So basically, you sit, the back of the fence is the back of your seat.
So you're using it for banquetts or whatever they're using it for on the inside?
Correct, correct. So they have, it's a combination. So you'll have metal fencing and these fenches, if you will.
So what is it made out of then, now? I really want to know, because it seems to me that there would be more wear and tear.
It's metal.
On, it's metal?
It's metal.
All right, and it's gonna be supported, so it's not pulling the fence?
No, correct. It's epoxy-anchored right into the concrete.
Okay. And how high is that?
I believe, I don't have the detail, I'll provide the details, about four feet. It's not even, I think it's like three to four feet, it depends. So the ones I've seen, and they use different details for each one, and when we submit for building plans, they have the fences a little bit lower, and then the fench goes up, and then it goes down. But I mean, no higher than about what this podium is.
All right, and you're, you'll be facing away from Ridge Road, I.
Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
And the.
Depends on where you are, though. I mean, obviously, if you're on the side, you'd see it from the side.
Right, I mean, you're obviously maximizing the table. Is there a number of tables that can be put out there?
If they exceed a certain number, they'll have to get town board approval for special-use permit. The same would hold true for a restaurant over a certain indoor seating, would also be subject to special-use permit by the town board. And once the floor plan for the projects finalized, they'll make that determination of whether or not the town board review and approval are needed as a final step to move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The bike rack is away from the entrance?
We could, we could shift it closer, I mean, wherever you'd like it. I mean, we just wanted to make sure we had it on.
Because right now, you're gonna make them walk clear around the front of a seating area, or you're gonna make them walk around the dumpster, if you choose to ride your bicycle. And that's one of the things we're trying to encourage.
So, I mean, I wouldn't have an issue putting it in, you know, one of these areas or one of these, you know, that's completely fine.
But right now, it's showing it on the west side of the restaurant, correct?
That is correct.
All right.
That is correct. And the thing is, is what we wanted to do is, we weren't sure exactly what this front area was gonna be, so we wanted to secure it to the building, if you will. And that was the idea of putting it there. But I mean, if you want it shifted, we don't have an issue with that. It is in the front, I mean, keep in mind, when we place this, it is in the front of the building, the front side of the building, minus the patio area. So that's, and that was kind of, as Carrie was saying, once we have the final plans, we could work with internal staff if they want to tweak where the bike rack is.
Okay, that would be helpful. And also, it would be helpful if there were another bike rack attached. I think there's a place for four bikes at the moment, right?
We could add a bike rack.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's another one over near Aspen Dental, too, isn't there?
There's one right here, too, for, I mean, there's two. There's one here and one here.
All right.
So, and the thought with this one was to have the bike rack, so you had this large striped area, so they had, you know, it just seems safer that, you know, if you're getting on your bike, if there's any gear or anything, you've got this nice little striped-off area that no one's parking at.
Okay. Thank you for the fencing. I think that that will be very helpful to not only your tenants, but to the neighbors. The degrees Kelvin on the lights, I just hope you guys are aware of that.
We are, it's less than, I was trying to get the exact number, but they confirmed it's less than four, but I don't know what the exact number is. So I can provide that, once we have all the specs on it.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. E.
First, thank you for listening to our comments at the workshop. We definitely appreciate what you're doing here. My first question is with the internal stamped crosswalk areas and so on. Am I understanding right that we still have a curb step at each of those crosswalk locations? So the parking lot perimeter's curbed, right?
That is correct. What we'll do is, we'll do a drop curb piece at each one of those, so it will be dropped.
That's what I wanted to ensure. Okay, great. This, I guess maybe is more of a comment, maybe a discussion point for the board. There's snow storage, proposed snow storage area kind of along the north property line there, and adjacent to DiVincenzo's Bakery. That's a really steep slope. I was out there today looking at it. That's a really steep slope, and I'm just a little concerned about snow, especially along their building, causing, you know, water issues. I know they've got kind of a, almost like a concrete gutter or something along the edge of their building, I think, for stormwater. But, you know, they got an AC unit over there and stuff, and I'm just a little concerned about what that might lead to them for maintenance issues.
Well, there's a couple of different things. First of all, in a freak storm like we had this year, a couple of the freak storms, there's gonna be no choice but to truck it offsite. There are, in the leases, certain requirements of how many percentage of spaces they have to maintain, if you will, even if there's snow storage. So say, for instance, there's 90, they have to have 70, you know, available, even in a freak storm. So there should not be an issue with maintenance of this, because these are all long-term leases, and basically, the requirements of the leases are to keep this maintained. And the development, the developer I represent has got, you know, quite a few apartments across the country, let's put it that way. The number is actually staggering. But what I was going to say is that they have an entire maintenance division that will be maintaining this property. So there always is a concern about snow storage as far as drainage. I can tell you, we accommodated it in the SWIP report, and of what kind of drainage we're gonna have, what kind of melting of snow we're gonna have, what kind of salt issues we would have, has all been addressed in the engineering. As far as, will snow be a problem at some point if we have a freak storm? I can't guarantee that won't happen.
Sure, yeah, no, I mean, I understand all that, it's just, you know, we're calling out a dotted-in area that's, you know, the width of the bakery, and if snow is pushed on that hill, it's gonna tumble right down onto their building, I think.
And we will not do that. I mean, there's, snow storage is always a sore point for me personally, because when, you have to show it, but the reality is, it is handled in a practical fashion, rather than an engineered fashion with your plow crew. It's like, when it gets to a certain point, they're not gonna push it on the neighbor's property, they can't. So basically, what it's gonna do is start consuming some parking area spaces, depending on the level of the storm. And like I said, the big thing is, is we have the means, that we're not limited by just this property. If we have to truck it off, we'll truck it off.
Okay.
I wish I had a better answer, but that's the most honest answer I can give.
Okay. I'll let you talk about those signboard things. What's the patio material outside of Qdoba?
They have a couple of different ones, and usually, it's a lot of times a stamped concrete that we've seen, but they do have a paver option as well. So most likely, it'd be stamped concrete that's in that area. And the concrete works a little bit better, because, to your point, Alan, earlier, is that they epoxy-anchor in all the tables and benches and whatnot.
Okay, I think other than maybe just some possible conditions, I think I'm good.
Mr. E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the curb depressions that you're putting at the crosswalks, will they have an ADA pad?
The answer is probably not complete ADA. And the reason why is these islands are a little bit too small.
Yeah, I mean, just a grip pad is fine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we could do that, but it won't be the traditional wings, is what I was getting at, because you can't fit them.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that it.
The truncated domes.
Yes.
Exactly, and that's fine, and that's fine, and I have no problem that that comes out and.
Couldn't have set it better myself.
I'm a code guy.
Truncated domes. So I don't know, did you see the letter from the fire marshal?
That I did not see.
You did not see, okay.
No, I did not see that.
There's a comment on here, he talks about the curbs. These curbs show a height of six inches with plantings in them, all the kind of little islands. He's nervous about the size of them, and also the fact that it's a six-inch curb that comes to a square 90-degree edge. He would like a.
We can revive, those are pretty standard curves. I don't, I don't have a issue with a different detail, because really, they're concrete, so we could form them any way you want them.
I think he's looking for like that chamfered edge.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that if he clips it with the fire truck, he doesn't, you know, blow out a tire.
Traditionally, they're always chamfered from a construction standpoint, because if it's concrete, it has to be chamfered or it'll crack, unless it's granite. Granite are usually the hard edge. But we have no problem putting a chamfered edge on it, and everything else here is fine.
Okay. Like, can I just, I think what the fire marshal's looking for is more of a mountable curb, not just a chamfered top edge, I think is what, and maybe an alternative, which might suffice so you don't have to look at doing that, would be maybe showing some turning, vehicular turning radius stuff that the fire marshal could review to prove that it shouldn't be an issue maybe.
If it's okay with us, I'm gonna give this to him, is that okay?
You absolutely can, and that was, apologies for the lack of a copy being sent to the applicant. It was just received today, the fire marshal's comments, and so Michelle probably didn't have a chance to forward them too electronically.
No worries.
The, typically, the, just so you're aware, this round of reviews the fire marshal did in concert with the fire chief from Ridge Culver, I believe, Ridge Culver, that, so they could review them together and review, because now the new updated code provides a role for the, not in addition to the fire marshal, for the fire chief as well. Turning radius, if they meet their, the code internal requirement for drive aisles, they should be sufficient for the turning radius for the fire truck.
Well, a couple of things to answer that, is we did run the truck, we run a truck, actually, a tractor-trailer could go through here. So a fire truck is gonna be able to, it's not, we do not have any tractor-trailer deliveries going there, but it can run through here. The other thing is the town requirement of a 25-foot drive aisle, rather than 24-foot, helps that as well. The other thing is, we got rid of this one curb cut in the center, so now you circulate around the entire outside edge. So you're, the radius going around the whole side, if you were gonna do anything, I would suggest, suggest this curb right here, this island, right at the edge. So the only thing I could see possible of an issue is right at that edge. And what we can do there is potentially, I would almost taper it down, go about halfway, and then taper it down to a drop curb at the edge, so you still have your closed drainage, but you could go over top of it. That would probably be the most logical thing, but we could work with the fire marshal on it.
Okay. The other, we're sort of an aesthetic thing with the buildings, it shows on the elevation that you brought in at the Qdoba, there's some large lit yellow squares on either side of the building.
Those are, I've seen those before, and what they.
Brad, do you have the elevations of them?
I sent it back that way.
The intention on those is like a cove lighting that is around them, actually, if you could apologize. No. The, these right here are, first of all, they have the task lighting that's directly on the panel. That would have to be reviewed with a sign ordinance, so it would depend on what they are. But I have seen them without the signs, that they're kind of, like, they glow around the outside edge, so there's no flooding or whatnot, it's just kind of an ambient lighting. But these actually goose necks that come down, they're showing onto a sign panel. That would be part of the sign package, and I wouldn't be looking for an approval of that, that would be under separate review.
Sure. And I guess the last question is, I don't know if this is a branding thing, and if it is, I understand. The urgent care, and I don't know if we discussed this, is flat across the top?
That's correct.
And the Aspen Dental is arched.
That is correct.
Is there a purpose on that, or?
Yes, the purpose is that they're two separate businesses, and they wanted some kind of delineation with some kind of unity as well. So basically, it's a similar design, but they wanted some kind of differentiation. So, it was a brand, but it's also so people know that this side of the building's the urgent care, this side of the building's the dental, so it, it, it's kind of wayfinding in a sense, subliminally.
Okay, and then, and this is getting nitpicking, I'm very sorry about this.
That's okay.
Um, it's probably the obsessive compulsive disorder. The, the center column here, they've got the caps, each one's colored, the center one is, is purple, just like Aspen dental. You see, it's red, purple, purple?
Mm-huh.
Is there any way to make that like black? So that it's not too, too purple in one? I'm gonna drive by and it's gonna drive me bananas.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that's actually the case.
Okay.
I think that's the color copy and the rendering.
Okay.
There is not, there's not three colors.
Getting, getting real nitpicky there.
It's more or less how my copier prints it out.
Okay, I just, I can't do two purple and one red, that's just...
No, no, that's, that's not the intention.
Okay.
That is not the intention.
Um...
There's only two colors.
Awesome, and then, uh, uh, last thing's a comment, I just wanna mention, um, that you dropped the mic, so if there's something wrong with it, Nate can't get mad at me.
Sorry.
That's it, that's all, thank you, thank you.
I won't drop the mic.
Anybody else that has a question? I do have one more question.
I just have a traffic question, aside from the fact that I'm not so sure I understand this traffic report, just because those businesses have basically been closed for a while, so I'm not sure where these numbers came from. Are we allowing north and south off of Portland into and out of that driveway?
Yes, this is full, this is full access on both, and it is currently. It is currently, so what we're doing is, right now there's a write-in. Sorry. Right now there's a write-in, write-out, and, and the driveway we're closing, and then there's full, full access on, on both other driveways and we're maintaining that. Now, to answer your question, you are correct that businesses change, but they can only do a traffic report on when the business was open.
Right.
You know, so, so when, when I use the statement that there's a negligible change, I'm not using the statement that something went out of business and now there's gonna be more traffic. I'm saying when it was in business to when it's in business, there's a negligible, negligible change.
Great, that was it.
Okay, so I, I heard you mention you're gonna submit a sign package separate?
That, that will be separate and it's usually typically from their signed vendor directly.
Is all those signs then proposed on what's gonna be on the buildings, or are you thinking of a pedestal sign, or are you thinking monument sign too?
They do, they do a full package, they may, um, go for a pylon sign, that would be a combination, or monument sign, that's a combination of all three businesses, and if they do that, that would be part of the sign calculation and, and would be looked at separately.
So, we've sort of discouraged pylon signs, new pylon signs?
They are allowed in the, they are permitted in the code and it typically is a site-by-site basis, so based on the application, there's, um, the sign regulations stipulate what is and isn't allowed, how many, how much signage, and if there's anything that, um, you know, that departs from there or is seen as something vastly different, then they could be invited back to the planning board for site plan review, if there's an issue with how and where it's being located on the site. But generally speaking, the signage in this district does not require, absolutely require planning board review or approval. It's something that often people have, um, it varies from applicant to applicant, sometimes applicants have that information and they have that considered as part of their site plan, and in some cases, it comes back separately.
Right, but I do know other properties on Ridge Road, we have discouraged or not allowed any pylon signs in other rulings. So, is that under our purview to state if they're gonna put up a sign, we want it to be a monument, not a pylon, or?
And I would, I'm gonna defer to our esteemed deputy attorney on that one, I think that the, if you want to express a preference for one over the other, the code does allow for at least one freestanding sign, up to thirty-two square, and I, and somebody can stop me, cause I'm quoting this off the top of my head, but a one freestanding sign per lot, per zoning lot in C business, um, that, and that's freestanding, so freestanding could be a monument style, or could be, um, a, a pylon pole style. If you have a preference, you certainly could indicate that, and if the applicant came back with something different, then maybe they would be invited for a revised site plan to address that change.
So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but we've been discouraging new pylon signs in the past, so I don't know how the rest of the board feels. However, having said that, my concern is there's three businesses, you're saying they can't put three pylons?
There would be one, it's, they have one freestanding sign per the combined lots, so similar to a plaza, um, if you look at, you could have one sign with multiple faces on it, so if you look at Depot Plaza, one freestanding monument sign with the different businesses.
Good.
My understanding was we were not combining the lots as part of this? There is no subdivision to combine these lots?
The, the, the understanding is we're, we're looking at it as one, leaving it as is right now, we would look at a re-subdivision under a separate application if we did.
Right, but as it is today, and if it remains multiple lots, then that means they could have multiple signs.
My understanding is that this development's being considered as one consolidated lot, and that is not, that's just, they're gonna prepare a map that combines all three parcels into one combined parcel. If they decide to split the lot in the future, um, then they would sit, submit another map showing a division between the two buildings.
And the reason for that, Carrie is absolutely right, is the reason for that is we do not, we're, right now, we're not creating any variances, and if we did subdivide into two, there might be a possibility as far as aside setbacks, so we're looking at it as one combined lot at this moment.
So, for the record, this is going to be subdivided into one?
Correct, from three to one.
Okay.
It has to be from three to one, yes.
All right, that wasn't my understanding, okay.
Yeah, that is correct, that is correct, I'm sorry.
And, and this is a question, follow-up question for you, Carrie, so when and if this comes in for a sign package, it does or doesn't come in front of our board?
It may, oh, sorry, it may not need to come before the planning board, if they are compliant with the regulations and if the proposed signage is in keeping with other signs in this district and along this area, then there are occasions where new signs come through and don't require, um, planning board approval, um, if that's...
So, what I'm curious is, um, I, I'd like to know how the rest of the board feels, cause I feel like these buildings are showing quite a bit of signage on the buildings, that to me seems sufficient to know that the businesses are there. If you're talking about a monument sign, I, I just wanna get away from the, you know, the, looking up and down Ridge Road, all the pylon signs, and we've been discouraging them unless they've already been there, which is...
I guess the only thing I would say as the applicant, and, and this is, in all due respect, I wouldn't wanna put my client, represent my client, of putting them in some other hardship than other businesses, that i- if the code's the code and we, we adhere to it, I, I'm not sure how a board would override what, what the zoning org considers.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention, I, I prefer the monument sign, obviously, I mean, that's something I prefer, but didn't we just not, six months ago, give Royal Car Wash a pylon sign?
Yeah, yes.
Across the street?
Yes, but there's another, I think, I can't remember which one it was down the road, they, we, we didn't allow a bigger pylon, we didn't allow...
Oh, was that the Del?
Autozone, I believe was the one.
Oh.
Yeah. Because of the signage on the building.
I was gonna say, typically those are the case-by-case decisions based on the, the site and if it can accommodate it and whether or not it's...
So, and what I'm curious is if we put conditions, can we put conditions, or are we not allowed to put conditions? What are preferences?
And we don't even get a chance to make it a case-by-case basis because it's not part of our review right now.
It would be a ministerial review.
Well, so...
Right, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm with you, Bernie, I think, I, I...
So, so we can make it a condition that this, our understanding, we're approving this, that it's gonna be subdivided from three lots to one? We could put that as a condition?
And the, actually, for the subdivision, that is actually something that the subdivision of, or re-subdivision of non-residential does not, only residential requires planning board approval, so I don't know if...
Yeah, but it can still be a condition.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Through and do it, whether we approve, right?
Right.
Okay, absolutely.
It's being presented that way, that's, so the question is...
We can put a condition on that it is subdivided, ultimately.
Absolutely, yeah. And what about if we would prefer, um, a monument sign versus a, no more, no pylon signs?
Well, you know, saying that your preference is one sign over the other isn't really, uh, enforceable to begin with, so it wouldn't, wouldn't force the applicant to do anything, but certainly you could make it a condition that, uh, your site plan approval, that you want this particular sign, um...
So we could...
But then again, it...
Can, can you legally do that, is the question, because that would be putting our proper, it, it, I guess, the, the only concern I have, and it's not monument or pylon or what, is that we're leaving it up to the tenants, if they decide, for instance, to shrink down their building signage, to add a corner pylon sign by a right and they're within the square footage requirements of code, that is their option to do that, and I don't wanna take that away from them. I, I just, I'm just careful about putting our, our, it's, it's almost like a spot zoning case, if we, we have particular requirements on it. I guess my, my only thing would be if you had, if you had, um, any requirements beyond what is in the code, then I would agree a hundred percent.
So, I'm trying to think of the corner currently. Um, there's not a pylon sign for the, is it a Starbucks, someone, I'm trying to remember?
It's a Bruegers and there is a pylon sign.
Dunkin' Donuts and Wendy's.
And, and Rite Aid's got one.
But Wendy's does not have a pylon sign, they have a monument. Dunkin' Donuts does not have a pylon sign. Um, Rite Aid does have one, but it's a smaller one, um...
Yeah, there is one there today.
I mean, I'm with you, if there's a mechanism for us to do this appropriately, then...
Yeah, I think, I think everybody's in support of what you're saying, Bernie, I'm just not sure how we... I, I, I think the thing that's making it harder is the fact that we don't have the signage as part of the application. You know, with Royal Car Wash, I mean, I wasn't here for that, but I'm just, I'm just saying, you saw the whole application, so you could review it and, and maybe take some of those things into consideration. Here, we don't have that to, you know, I mean, you've been gracious enough to make other changes that we've requested, um...
It's a great project, I mean...
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, and I, I, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna commit them to something that's beyond my...
Sure, yeah, we understand.
Authority to do so.
I don't, I, I don't wanna step out on a limb here, but I don't, I don't really have a problem with them having a pylon sign there. Now, maybe that's just me, I mean, you know...
I think the master plan, um, riles against the, the pylon signs on, on Ridge Road.
There's comments to that, to that regard, and I know we've had this discussion numerous times.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm thinking, yeah, I, where I'm at right now is that, you know, granted, it's not there yet, but the Royal Car Wash one, you know, I, I, I have a hard time making a justification myself that, you know, and again, you know, that, that's...
No, that, everybody's entitled.
Yeah, exactly, you know, we, there's a, there's gonna be potentially a, a bright yellow and blue lollipop three hundred feet down the road.
Right.
You know, that, that's where I'm having a, a, a moral internal argument.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at the three corners and I'm, I'm not having that arg, you know, cause I think this is sort of like a gateway into Arundecouy, and I'd like it to be, for, you know, very, as much presentable as pop, possible, and since there's gonna be three businesses, I wanted first off, make sure that there wasn't gonna be potential for three pylons.
Yeah, well, I'm with, I'm with, I'm with you on that one.
I'm not really in favor of a, of a pylon that has three businesses...
Sure.
On it, but a monument sign, I think would look nice.
Okay.
Um, but it's up to the board, I, I mean, I'd like, we're allowed to put a condition?
Absolutely, you can, you can put a condition on your approval, saying what, what you wanna see on the site plan. You can ask the applicant to, to come back and show what they're proposing as well.
That's what I would prefer that we do, is if we can have staff...
The, the...
Direct them back to us.
That means we can't approve it tonight, then? If we ask them that this is conditioned upon them bringing something else, that's different than, I believe, giving them approval for the town to review later, per code, correct?
Yes.
The board wants to see the signs, I guess is what.
So, if the, if the board wants to see the signs, then I would imagine that you'd be tabling the application for them to bring the signage for you, for your, for you to review as part of the application. And I do wanna clarify, um, just for the board's sake, we have two tables in our code that go with our sign code. One indicates that in C business, um, the, there is no, it doesn't specify, it just says you need a permit from the town. If you go to table B, there's a little note at the bottom that all signs require planning board review. So, there's a discrepancy in the code which has led to this, um, and I apologize to the applicant as well, to a difference in whether or not applications come to the board or they need board approval, there's a little bit of a discrepancy in our code currently.
I would prefer that we don't table it, and I, I don't mind, and, and quite frankly, other jurisdictions I've gone in front of have as part of the conditions that you'd have to come back for sign approval, which is fine. That, that's, that's completely fine, that...
So, the application, a separate application for sign approval, similar what happens when signage, signage comes in, it's just a sign application to the planning board, so it's not called site plan review, it's called sign approval. So, that could be made before, for the permit for signage would be issued, they'd be coming into the planning board for sign approval.
We can make that a condition of this approval?
That you're, or you're just not addressing signage as part of the application, you're just doing the site plan, and that the signage would be handled separately.
But my concern is, is it could come in and not go before the whole board, when we've had all this discussion. So, how do we ensure that it comes before the board?
Well, you're only given, granting site plan approval for, and that signage isn't part of that, you can just state that as part of the motion.
So, we, we make that a condition?
Make that a condition.
That signage has to come back as a separate application.
That's, that's completely fair.
Yeah, cause...
That's what I was assuming anyway.
Yeah.
I was assuming that anyway. The only thing I was stating is that I wouldn't want, for, just speaking ahead, that I wouldn't want them to be subject to any different rules than anyone else, that's all I would say.
It's gonna be a problem with this.
I have a question.
Hold on one second, guys, so I can hear, so, go ahead, Mr. Eber.
Um, I'm looking at the elevations and I noticed, um, the windows, and I only have the one, uh, set, or well, some facades, and I noticed that some of the windows appear not to be transparent, and I'm wondering if those are the only, if this is just an anomaly on this, or if there's other windows that are not transparent?
No, it, they're, they're all transparent, and it, it's just, it's the coloration of the blue and, and whatnot that's, that's, that's in there, so. So, I, I've had that question, are the windows gonna be blue, it's just a rendering technique that...
Uh, yeah, I just saw this black one, and then it said something different, and I was thought maybe...
It's calling it out as spandrel glass, right?
Okay.
That's what you're looking at, Brad?
There is one window, there is one window, that's...
That's what you're looking at though, right, Brad?
Uh, it says insulated spandrel grazing, color black.
And that is specifically... Is it on the Qdoba or the?
It's on the Aspen. The other one says clear.
Oh, she's showing this, yeah.
Sorry.
You're okay, you're okay.
He's looking right here. Called out separately down below.
That, that is particularly where they have a piece of equipment behind it, so they still have the facade, it will look as a similar color.
Okay.
That, that's, that's specifically that. And just so you know, that's, this sheet, you have to look at the one I passed around, this sheet is a generic materials sheet that, and, and the one that you have with the rendering is specific to this project. So, I just wanted to get you a sample board of the materials, so that just calls out what, what each item is.
Oh, okay.
One that's all blue and one that's all black.
I see, okay. And then, the other thing that I wanted to, to throw out there again is, um, the sidewalk on Portland. Um, I know that you mentioned that it might be a sidewalk to nowhere, but there is the bakery down there and a little bit at a time, I don't know what everybody else thinks. It's very quiet.
I would agree, if we can do the, the sidewalk, that was one of the things I thought we had agreed to in the workshop. Um, I, there's only two of us here that want that, I don't think we're gonna win that.
So, even if there is a sidewalk, there isn't one on the other side though, correct?
Um, what do you mean, across the street on Portland?
North of the cutout, that's, that's gonna be all either dirt or...
And I apologize if I mis, uh, misheard, but I thought that was the discussion we had, to bring it to the corner and focus on, on doing some other things rather than doing that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, my, my, I mean, it would be, it would be great to do it, but I, I think the applicant's done a lot, and I think it is kinda going, I mean, yes, there's the bakery, but beyond that, it's all residential and, and I, I don't think there's opportunity for sidewalk, or there will be, I, I don't have a problem with...
There's a sidewalk on the west side of Portland Avenue, I think the intention of it ending there is to hit the crosswalk and then you cross the road. I understand, I know the bakery's down there, but then you're gonna have, you know, it, it, you go past the crosswalk and then come back, yeah, I...
Does it mean they can't put a pylon sign?
The, the thought with the bakery too is, it, just to your point, was we didn't wanna encourage people to walk up that area where there is traffic coming in, we wanted them to cross the road and go to the other side of the sidewalk.
Well, they're not gonna do that, so that doesn't make any sense, I just know human behavior, they just won't do that. They'll jaywalk, and you'll have to account, you'll have to accommodate them walking across the curb cut, that's one of the things that we need to do when we develop things, which They're just not going to do it.
So I, I mean.
So we have a lot of conditions here.
Yeah, I get the feeling the longer I'm here, there's going to be more conditions.
Is one of them, how does the board feel about the sidewalk? I'm indifferent myself. I mean, I could support or not support.
Perfect world would be great. I think the applicant did a lot already. I, I'm okay without it.
I'd prefer to see it with.
Mr. Hobbs?
I'm indifferent. I mean, I, I mean realistically, it's going nowhere. I mean, if you went another 10, you know, 20 feet to, to, to the bakery, but still, you know, you don't want people walking or people coming in and out pretty quickly. Plus you're stirring snow there in the winter time. I, I think, I think it's good without.
I think that we should have the sidewalk.
Is it a hindrance for you to put the sidewalk in with your tenants?
Well, I guess, I guess the question is if we put the sidewalk in, it's in the right of way, so the town, the town's maintaining it. So that's an additional cost too, so for.
Was one of the comments from the town, was it not that in the earlier paper that we got from the town, the town had one of the, I don't know.
There was an internal staff review identifying the pedestrian connection along the perimeter. However, there is, it's a Monroe County permit to install that would need Monroe County's review and approval for that installation. And I would, so I want to just, I'm not sure if Bob Kylie was at the meeting and so he would just make, just make sure that he's aware of the, of the additional sidewalk. Because it is the town's to maintain.
I mean, if we did put a sidewalk, they were promoting people to go the wrong way, right? I mean, you're literally going down, I mean, you're promoting them to, you know, jaywalk, you know, you're getting harm's way. So you really don't want to promote people from going down there. You want them to go right across, right into the restaurant, because that's realistically the only reason why they would be there.
Yeah, and, and, and the bakery's sidewalk, I'm looking at aerial image, there's a walkway that comes right out to the road, a concrete walkway from the bakery. And if you build a sidewalk down that way, you're going to build the sidewalk basically till you hit that. I mean, there's, there's really nothing farther down Portland. It's all residential and there's a sidewalk on one side of the street. I, I would love to see sidewalks on both sides, but that, I think that's not super realistic. So basically what I'm seeing is you're going to build a sidewalk down to the concrete walkway for the bakery and what we've done is had you build a sidewalk to a bakery that you don't own.
Correct.
And, and that might be an unpopular opinion and, you know, but, but I don't, I don't want to be like, build a sidewalk to the bakery for, you know, no benefit of your own, but make you pay for it. You know what I mean? That's, that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
And actually from a practical standpoint, when we did talk about this. Right over here, basically we talked about, we did have, sorry, not on the microphone, a discussion about continuing the sidewalk and it was where do we tie the sidewalk into the buildings?
Yeah.
And that's why we went to the corner. And, and basically what I was going to say is we did have a discussion of tying it across here and then, and the overall thought in that workshop was we wanted to tie it in the front. And that's why we, I distinctly remember, that's why we narrowed into tying it into like Walgreens into this, this side of here to encourage all the circulation, pedestrian circulation at the front of the building. To your point Alan, when you were saying where the bike racks should be and everything like that. So you're encouraging everything to the front, but you're building a sidewalk to the back. So I, I'm, that's.
It's also getting the developer to add additional pedestrian right of ways that the town couldn't necessarily afford.
That, that was our thought process when we put it in.
I think, I think that makes sense when and if, you know, there's potential for it to continue, in my opinion. I, I just, I don't know, I.
Boy, the more we talk, the more I'm leaning towards the sidewalk, so, because the whole.
Why don't you just do a yes or no poll on this just informally and then? I think you did.
So, the only thing I wanted to point out though is that presentation we got about being walkable and all the rest, this sort of addresses that. That it makes it more walkable for the seniors. Yes, it is another business, but it makes the whole area connected.
Right.
So there is some validity to the request that Mr. Huber's making, so.
If I, I'm going to use that Walgreens as a case study again, if that's okay with everybody.
The one that's closed?
Huh?
The one that's closed, right?
No, the one over on Culver and, and East Ridge.
Oh, okay.
Right, so it, it, that, that one is on the same side of the road as the sidewalk. Across Culver Road, on the west side of Culver Road, there is a sidewalk that comes down East Ridge. It makes the corner in front of what used to be Abbott's. R.I.P. And then in front of the Verizon, and then it stops at the edge of the Verizon parking lot. You go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lots. And then there's a sidewalk in front of the ninth lot. There's no sidewalk in between. Then the 10th and 11th lot have a sidewalk in front of them and then it ends again until you get all the way down to Titus Avenue.
So I'm missing the point.
The point, the point is, is that someone built a sidewalk to nowhere, three neighbors farther down the street thought it was a good idea and had sidewalks installed in their front yard and they don't connect to anything.
Right, but this would connect to something. It, it brings the whole, all the businesses together.
Right, it's connecting the bakery into the corner.
Okay.
Is what it's doing. And also, you know, it's a whole different mindset on, as far as I'm concerned. I have no problem allowing a developer to make money off of the, the citizens as long as they're giving something back and this is a small thing to give back.
Sure. Okay.
I thought you were going to propose a toll on the sidewalk.
I, I honestly, I'm, I'm not fighting you guys on this. I, I thought the whole idea was to invest into the front and do the crosswalks and everything.
I think we should do both.
But if you saw, you know, a lot of the different things that are going on, even the most recent planning session, they're making the town more walkable.
Oh, no, I, I honestly, this is pretty common in most jurisdictions that they make them walkable. From a design standpoint, I, I can't stand doing sidewalks to nowhere. I'd, I'd almost encourage more landscaping than sidewalks just for, just, just for that notion. But if you're going to do a sidewalk and you, I'm not going to, I'm not going to stick. If you wanted to make it a condition of approval, it's not the end of the world to do a sidewalk. I just don't like to, you know, encourage everybody to go to the front. If you've tried to force people to go to the front, they eventually, you're right, some will deviate from that, but mostly they kind of change their traffic patterns. If you give them an option to walk to the back, they're going to walk to the back. You know, so, so it's kind of like giving them, giving them a decision-making, which, which is fine. I, I guess I could go either way on it. If, if it's, if the board is, 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 feels very strongly that they have to have that sidewalk as a part of approval, I'm not going to fight that.
So if we do, so if we did do a sidewalk down there, would we have to have another stamped pavement walkway to the backside of the building?
That I cannot do. I can't do.
Because if they're going to walk, they're going to, they're going to start walking the back. So you're going to mirror what's in the front to the back.
If we start doing that, we affect all the landscaping, planting areas, things of that nature.
Walking down the sidewalk, they're going to walk on the backside of the building.
Yeah, and Mike, when we talked about that in the, in the workshop too, originally we were talking about having a pedestrian access way back there.
Yeah.
And collectively with the applicant included, we kind of said that wouldn't work. One, because it was pushing people to the back of the building and two, because grade back there, there's like a, I don't know, four, five foot.
Correct.
Rise in grade, so it'd be very difficult as well. And, and I, I just think we're starting to, to go down a path here of requesting an awful lot out of an applicant that's already done an awful lot, in my opinion, but.
I don't necessarily see it as a solution to the problem. I just see it as a step towards the solution. So we're moving towards the direction if we have a, we, you know, we, we got, I don't know how many pages of traffic volume stuff that we looked at stuff for vehicles and extending a sidewalk on there, heading in the right direction. In the future, if the town or county decides to put in a sidewalk, it's less money out of the taxpayer's pocket. It's the developers putting this in now. And it's not going to necessarily solve any problems now, but we're moving in that direction. It's sort of, I don't know, I kind of feel like in an area like that, if you have road frontage, it's kind of an expectation that you put in sidewalks if they're not already there.
Again, the only thing I'd state is that if you look at this site plan, it's pretty clear of where the pedestrian circulation is around the site and it is on, on the west side. It crosses and then it goes across the front. There is nothing on the east side of, of Portland, so you're creating a new condition. So anyway, I, I mean, that, that was, all I'm telling you right now is that was the rationale, how we did it, how we did it. And that was the discussion, so we, we basically came to, I thought a consensus, but, and why we did it, but if, if it's, that's the way you want to do it, that's the way you want to do it.
I guess I'll ask the board, since we already have a whole list of conditions. Who would like to see the sidewalk as a part of the conditions? Mr. Huber, yes or no? Yes?
Yes.
Who would like to see, yes? Who would not like to see?
Not that I don't want to see it, I don't think it's.
No, yeah, I mean, if it goes, it goes.
If you want to make it a condition, that's all.
So I guess we'll leave it to Karen, no. So I guess we're, we're at a dead heat here, so I guess we're going to have to not push the sidewalk at this time. We tried. General consensus?
That's fine.
We tried. I, I do see your point now that I looked at it more, so. Just something for you to take into consideration.
Oh, and, and I, I'm not fighting that by any means, it's, it's just, it's just in this specific circumstance, it's kind of a little bit unique.
Okay. So I just would like to, if it's okay, a little bit non-standard, I'd like to review all the different conditions before we go into a motion.
Do you want to do seeker first or do you want to do?
Well, I guess we could do it. We want to do it the traditional way. Okay, so the first thing is, is we do need a.
I'm asking you, Mr. Chair.
Well, what I thought I would do is, is I took quite a few notes. I just want to make sure I didn't miss any.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I have is a condition of our approval is that this is going to be subdivided from three lots to, to one. Is that stated correctly?
Yes, you can either say re-subdivided or subdivided. Either one works.
Re-sub, okay. They're going, the applicant's going to add a fence in the rear parking.
North side of.
North side.
On top of the retaining wall.
The parking in the south. Is it southeast, southwest, southeast?
Southeast.
Southeast corner. Will be striped near the curb cut.
The first spot, yeah.
Yep. Right here.
Yep.
I took down, the bike racks will be placed and I had a question mark. I wasn't sure where we left that.
I think we're going to allow that to happen between the developer and staff is my understanding.
Do you want to indicate that you'd like it closer to the entrance, to an entranceway?
Will there be an entrance to the Qdoba on the west side of the building?
Yes, there will be, but that is the intention.
So bike rack closer to the restaurant entrance?
Yeah, and, and what we could do is we could, we could locate that with the building permit, so we have the exact door locations, probably makes sense.
Okay. So then I also have, snow storage will not be allowed on the north side facing the DiVincenzo Bakery.
I'm okay without having a condition. I guess I just want to bring it up. I, I wanted to bring it up. I don't know that we need a condition. I don't know that we want to necessarily limit them. I, I don't know, maybe it's a board topic, I.
Well, I, well, what I can say to you is whether or not it's a condition of this board, functionally and operationally, if something happened, happening on one site causes a detriment to the neighboring site, for example, stormwater can't be directed, you can't, drainage from one site can't cause another property a problem. And if it does, then it becomes a code enforcement issue and then we would be out to seek a remedy. And our remedy would likely be, hey, you can't put the snow there, because if, when it melts, it drips down into there. So it becomes a code enforcement, you know, issue. So whether or not it's a condition of this board, operationally, if there's a problem, somebody will bring it to our attention and we'll address it.
So I only wrote it down because you were very willing to say that wouldn't happen, so.
Yeah, that.
So it's okay to leave it as a condition or not? No? Snow storage on the north side will not be allowed facing the DiVincenzo Bakery.
I think that one sort of self-pleases itself.
Yeah, I think I'm okay without that one. I think we can remove that.
I would be fine without it. I mean, it seems that we're limiting.
It's gone. I wrote down something about grip pads in the curb cuts, special grip pads in the curb cuts.
Uh, that, that is just, if you want to put it as a condition, that the connection to the crosswalks would be subject to town review. That's probably, if, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll trade you snow storage for a sidewalk.
Okay. And then there was some type of agreement made on the fire marshal's comments that he didn't capture regarding the curb. Either there was allowing for.
Maybe, maybe just a condition.
Chaffed edges or not.
That they work with the town staff and fire marshal and/or fire chiefs to.
Display circulation of fire vehicles?
Yeah, just, just make sure that the fire marshal and fire chiefs are happy with.
Review, review any curb changes with the.
Yeah.
Yep. Did I miss any? Put a list for, we haven't had a list like this in a while. Okay, so having said that.
Bernie, did you see something about the signage?
That signage would be a separate.
Signage would be a separate.
It was right at the top.
We spent the most time talking about.
Would the board like some clarification on the, on the sign law? Or are you comfortable with what we've already discussed?
I, I think we're comfortable. We, we just wanted to know what our, what we could enforce and not enforce. Differ to everybody else on the board. Anybody need anything more? No. So basically the way I wrote it was the signage package must be presented to the planning board. Is that condition enough? That, okay, it's fine. For approval. Okay. So with that, would anybody like to do seeker? If you want, I can go ahead and.
I can do it if you want.
Okay, go ahead.
On PB 1705-2, upon the matter of request of Fitzgerald Engineering, acting as agent for the Holland Tratta Project for preliminary final site plan approval, to develop existing parcel into two, or to construct two new buildings, 6,700 square feet and 2,600 square feet with the site-related improvements on premises 1238, 1258, 1268, East Ridge Road in a C Business District. I find that this is an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Would someone like to make a motion and I'll, I will enter into, I guess I better do it. Okay.
Might be easier.
Upon the matter of request by Fitzgerald Engineering, act as an agent for the Holland Tratta Project for preliminary final site plan approval, to redevelop existing parcels to construct two new buildings, 6,700 square feet and 2,600 square feet with site-related improvements on premises 1238, 1258, 1268, East Ridge Road in a C Business District, case number PB 1705-2, that we approve it for preliminary flight, preliminary and final site plan approval with the following conditions. One, that the signage package will be presented to the planning board for approval. Two, it will be re-subdivided from three parcels to one. Three, the, there will be a fence in the rear north at the top of the retaining wall. The parking space in the southeast corner will be striped near the curb cut, the very first parking spot. The bike racks near the restaurant will be closer to the restaurant entrance. And the connections at the crosswalks will be subject to town review for grip pads, or is that just a town review in general? I'm trying to remember.
Town.
Town review. And they will review any curb changes with the fire marshal based on his comments in the memo. That's fine. I believe that covered all of the conditions. Based on that, I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I was just trying to be cooperative there. You stole it away from me.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. And one absent. With that, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
As we work through this and thank you for being very cooperative and doing business.
You're very welcome. We look forward to, nice project for you.
Thank you. With that, can we call the next case please? Or I'm sorry. I've misplaced my agenda, thank you. So the next one's the town board referral.
Sure. Town board referral, upon the matter of request by Ruth Ross, Shimmy's Southern Kitchen, to modify an existing special use permit to expand the uses and conditions contemplated in prior special use permits issued for this property to include the use of an outdoor barbecue smoker and expanded hours of operation on premises 1780, East Ridge Road in a C Business District.
So Carrie, could you give us a little bit of background from what occurred at the town meeting?
I, I sure can. So the, this new business what is currently open and operating under a special use permit that runs with the property from a prior restaurant. So the history of this, of this particular location has been past restaurants. The special use permit that's on file allows up to seating for 60 people and the hours of operation from 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. all, every day of the week. And so in thinking about the business, the, the Southern Kitchen and barbecue place, they really would like to have an onsite barbecue smoker and that's typically something that is held outdoors. Because that aspect of the business wasn't contemplated. Because that aspect of the business wasn't contemplated in prior approvals, we informed the business owner that a special use permit application would be needed to expand, to include that aspect of their business. At that time, they also indicated that they would like to consider the prospect of expanding hours of operation. So this was, the application was accepted at the May town board meeting, and by which they set the meeting, public hearing date for town board for the consideration of the special use permit to be held at their June meeting, that should be June eighteenth, if I'm, again, I'm quoting without looking at a calendar. So it's the third Tuesday of the month. At that time, the applicant will be making their presentation to the town board, explaining why they need the outdoor use of the smoker, and their thought process around potentially expanding hours of business. The fire marshals reviewed the proposed location of the smoker. There should be, in your packets, a comment, fire marshal site plan review. Just so you're aware, because this is a restaurant, the health department also will be working with these applicants to ensure that that facility meets all health department requirements as well. And so, the town board will be taking up this, the public hearing at their next meeting. Depending on the feedback that they get, they may or may not be ready to make a decision in response to the special use permit request. And they're asking this board for their comments related to the application, which is the standard procedure for a special use permit. That was a lot of information for a very, what is a fairly minor special use permit application. And I would like to remind the board that our special use provisions in our code are very conservative. There is not much that you can do when it comes to a restaurant in our busiest corridor that doesn't require a special use permit, under our current regulations.
Did you say this restaurant's currently in business?
They are currently, yes, so they've already received their C of O, and they, so they are open. They are currently, they do not have the smoker onsite, because it is pending approval of the special use permit.
So they're smoking offsite and bringing it in?
How they're handling it, or they may be cooking in the kitchen? Or they might be cooking, doing an alternative barbecue methodology. I'm not sure how they're doing it, and I wouldn't want to answer on their behalf.
That should be on their website, alternative barbecue methodology.
No, there's electronic smokers.
That's fantastic.
There's all different types of smokers, so.
So what do they need from us?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So the town board, by virtue of our code, requires the planning board to review a special use permit. In this case, there's very little changing, so sometimes with a special use permit, there might be a significant change in use, there might be parking changes. So you, from your perspective, when I think about this business, does a special use permit raise any issues from a site planning perspective? Things that a planning board would typically address. And so if there's anything that you'd like to think about or provide comment, or you can simply just provide a negative or positive referral with, it's up to this board completely.
So Carrie, we were talking a little bit prior to the meeting, just casual. Is there any other businesses that are open up until two o'clock in the morning? I know there's Applebee's across the street, but I don't know what time they close.
You know what, I can find out, I think that there may be some restaurants that are open that late, that serve late night food, like down further on the ridge. I can find out from the fire marshal if there are others. That's a matter that the town board would take up as part of theirs. And, you know, the town board, the applicant didn't really specify certain days of the week. I expect that at the public hearing, they would indicate what days of the week. I don't think they were really anticipating that being all days. I think they were maybe indicating, thinking about just the weekend, like Friday and Saturday. So the town board will probably ask for clarification on when exactly. And it's up to the town board to determine whether or not they would grant that aspect of the request.
Just one more clarification, so the town board referral was for the hours of operation and the smoker?
It's, yeah, so you just get to comment on all aspects of this special use permit. In this case, those are the two factors that are above and beyond the existing special use permit on file for this property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I drove back there, there's right now, what looks to be the area that they're putting the smoker, has two rental storage units there. The big white boxes.
Pods.
Yeah, like a pod or in a verdy box.
This, on the grass, because this is on the grass.
Those were in the first two parking spots directly to the east.
Parking spots. There's, I don't understand that there's enough room where they want to put this smoker, what's circled on the sheet that they sent us. And also, there's a wooden egress right there.
So I do know that the fire marshal has reviewed it and has indicated that the location.
Is not within ten feet of something flammable.
Correct.
And that very well may be, but I can tell you, I drove back there, there's a wooden egress there.
A wooden?
There's an exterior landing pad, which was full of a bunch of junk. And then there's a wood railing, I think it was almost like a board-on-board style type.
Right.
Guardrail around it. And I kind of agree with Alan's comment, I think it's just something maybe we should put in our referral back. Just that, the amount of space that it visually appeared, it seems like the cooker would be almost touching the tree in order to be fifteen feet away from the building, which is what they're kind of indicating, I think, fifteen feet away from any structure. I'm just not sure there's enough physicals.
So previously, you said that the fire marshal did one of the other reviews in concert with the fire chief. Did he do the same on this one?
I think for this one, it's not, because of what this is, I don't think that's required. And the other ones, the code, New York State Building Code has changed, and that's why the, there's expanded review for the fire chief in an area, depending on the scale of the project, or the scope of the project.
So my only comment is if the fire marshal looked at it and he was okay.
Yeah, I guess, he was okay based on probably the same thing we're looking at right here. You know.
I think he's been onsite. Just so you're aware, the fire marshal, as well as our building inspector, have been on the property as part of their renovation and occupancy in their current location. The fire marshal in particular, because of some upgrades in the kitchen that have been needed. So he's been at the location several times during the process of them, before they were allowed to open. He was the one who would have done the onsite inspections needed for the C of O. And so it would be based, and I will say, apologies, the applicant is working with the owner of the property to prepare a more detailed site plan for the town board's review. We were, I apologize, no, it's my fault that they didn't have it sooner. We have new equipment, we were going to be providing them with electronic copy of the most current site plan, in the interest of, you know, efficiency and expediency for them. New equipment was being installed, and so that's why there's been a delay.
So it also mentions that this is representative of the grill, but it would have an attached covering.
Right, so I have no idea what that looks like, the enclosure.
Is that something on top, or is that?
Is that a tent? What are they doing here?
Yeah, I guess a lot of these comments, I would just support personally, you know, for the board's comment here. But I would support a comment back to the town board, just stating that fire marshal and/or building inspector thoroughly review final location, blah blah blah, just because, and/or coverings, or whatever we want to say, because I think there's some, I think these are really building code issues, but I definitely think that somebody should be formally reviewing that, and the town board should just be aware of that, I guess.
Right, so I guess we're supposed to make a positive or a negative referral? And I'm thinking if it's not a hazard, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I'm sort of a little bit concerned about, I think that's Ellenwood that's on the north side of that. I'm a little concerned about the neighbor that lives there. I mean, the prevailing wind isn't going to go that direction often. Normally, it's west to east, right? But on a bad day, a narista, if you will, you know, they might have a living room full of smoke. Right, I mean, that's, you know, I don't know if you guys have ever used a smoker before, but it, all day long, can get pretty.
It's early morning hours usually, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, I can, I live over, I mean, I probably live two miles away from a barbecue place that smokes pretty early in the morning over on Culver Road. I won't say the name, but I can smell it most mornings. So, I mean, and that's two miles away. So that'd be my only concern, is that, you know, you're pretty tight over there.
I, yeah, what you were going to say, and I was going to provide the same commentary about the same establishment near a place where I work, you always smell it. That would be my only concern about how often you would get smoke, or particularly, I know, smell. I know that that's not particularly something that I would want to smell all the time where I lived. So I don't know what type of an impact that that might have. And if the smoker, what hours the smokers will be operating? Will they be operating during the day, or if they're open until two, will they be going late into night? I don't know much about smoking, but isn't this something that takes a long time?
So normally, it's early morning, and then they only smoke a certain amount for the day, normally. Sometimes they run out, type of thing.
Just based on what I know, from what I've been able to read, I would say that I'm going to vote for a negative recommendation to the board without more information.
Yeah.
I just don't have enough here.
I'm going to vote for a positive, but that's me.
I just wish we had more, I mean, I think that, I physically went over there, and I don't know that this matters, but the, there's no gates on the front of their enclosure to the dumpsters at this moment, so they're just wide open. I don't know if that's required, that they have to have them enclosed or not, but.
We can take a look at that, that's, this is a plaza that has multiple tenants. And so, this is a tenant, so they are not the owner of the property, they're a tenant in the property.
Yeah, I get it, that they're not responsible for that, but the owner has chimed in to ask us to help them with this application. And also, are the two storage units there forever?
That's something that we can ask the, either the owner of the property or the applicant to address as part of their special use permit.
All right.
So, based on that conversation, I guess I'll just ask the board, who would like to vote a negative referral?
Based on the information I have, that's what I would like to do. I mean, I don't know that necessarily has, it doesn't matter to what the town board decides. But I would suggest that the town board get a little more information than what we have.
So, I just need to, I'll do a poll, let me go around.
Carrie, do we have to make either a positive or negative? Or can we just make a statement back to the board saying that we feel that more information is needed on?
We have done that before, and they have not come back.
I'm not necessarily negative or positive, I think, I just think the town board, I think from a site plan review standpoint, I think it's fine. Because it's a building code issue with the location. I think smell is really dictated by hours of operation, days of, you know, some of these other things that I don't know that were.
And so you certainly could indicate that, what you just said, Spencer, is that from a site plan perspective, you didn't see any issues, but here are some things that you would like the town board to think about in their consideration of the special use permit? And you could raise the list of issues or questions or concerns you have regarding either the smell or the operation hours, things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to say, you know, a negative referral, because I, I mean, I like to see that business there. I like to see something in that building, that they've done some work, you know, I just, I would like a little more.
So we've done this before, that we've tabled it for more information. But can I make a request, that the applicant actually comes to the next meeting, or is that not required?
Well, typically, it's not, because this is an item for board discussion, there is no provision for them to speak, or, and honestly, it's.
So it's not a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, and so they're not, certainly, they would come to the meeting if that was something they knew was required. And in this instance, I didn't express that to the applicant, that they should be here, because I didn't think that, I wasn't sure, based on the scope.
Are they allowed to speak, or are they not allowed to speak?
No.
There would be no prohibition against someone speaking at one of your meetings.
I'm just thinking, the last two cases that have come before the board, if we could have had a few questions answered, it might have been a positive or a negative real easy. It's just a suggestion.
So from a future process standpoint, what we'll let them know is when it comes as a referral to the planning board that an applicant should be here, we can certainly do that going forward.
Is there a public hearing at the town board?
There is, a public hearing will be scheduled, will be conducted in their June town board meeting. And so, these are kinds of things that, and certainly, the town board may have very similar questions as this board is raising. And so, what I was going to, you know, if you were to make the referral and indicate that from a site plan, as Spencer just stated, you could raise the questions that you would like the town board to think about or consider in their determination on the special use permit. That information would then be provided to the applicant as well, so that they would be prepared to address those issues at the town board level.
I think that sounds fair.
So we can send it back to the town board with no recommendation?
Essentially, or the observations that you made, based on the fact that it's a building code issue that can be addressed at the building level, and that some of the other issues that you have are these for the town's board's consideration. So that you can, you know, discuss that amongst yourself about the kinds of things you'd like the town board to think about when they make their decision.
Well, I would like them to look at the placement of the smoker, as far as its location to the building and to the storage buildings that are there.
And I think we want them to think about hours of operation of the actual smoker. Think about smoke, I mean, if prevailing wind is heading towards Ridge Road almost, you know, that could become an issue, and also smell, I think should be.
Okay. So I also, you asked a question about the storage containers, or is that code issue?
I don't know, that's not our issue, I think it's a code issue.
And then you said fences on the enclosure, which is a code issue.
Right, I have no idea what that enclosure looks like.
I'll have to take a look at the, when that was last approved, it's, you know, that's an existing plaza, so we'll take a look and see if it's compliant with its site plan.
The enclosure?
Correct, in other words.
There's no enclosure there at the moment.
Yeah, so we'll take a look and see what's on site and was part of the past site plan approval for that property. And if it's out of conformance, then it would be a code enforcement issue.
Oh, we're talking about two different things, I'm talking about the enclosure for the smoker itself.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we are talking about two different things, I apologize.
The other thing definitely is, I would think that when it was approved, that it was approved with gates.
Right, so the enclosure or cover for the smoker would be a building code issue, for sure, to make sure that it's compliant.
Is there any lighting for this?
That's a good question, I mean, that's in our purview, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. None that was indicated, so that might indicate hours of operation might be.
That's a good point, Brad.
That's very good. So what exactly are we doing, we're not doing a positive or a negative, but we're sending it back with, these are the things that we think the town board should look at? We're sending it back with non-prejudice, what are we doing?
And I think especially based on Brad's comment, I don't even really want to say that from a site plan standpoint, we're 100% okay with it, because I agree with you, if they're going to put lighting out there, we want to know what it is and what they're doing.
So you're just raising the questions that you'd like the town board to address as part of their deliberation?
So we're very pro-business, however, these are the things.
Okay, yes.
Town board to look at.
Yep.
Okay. So we don't need to vote on that, or we do?
You do need to vote on that as part of your.
So, we're going to vote on sending this back to the town board for, these are the issues we'd like them to address, without a positive or a negative approval. I'm just double checking.
Yeah, and I'm looking at Dan to make sure that I'm, I don't want to lead you down to.
I mean, you have the discretion to recommend to the town board whatever you want. My suggestion would be that you are very specific about what you recommend they do. You recommend that they consider A, B, C, D, E. And you can say, unless these things are satisfied, we recommend that you deny the application for the special use permit. If you're satisfied. If you're satisfied that these issues have been addressed, we recommend that you approve the special use permit.
This is why we have Dan at the meetings.
Why we made Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
Couldn't have said it any better.
So, well, I'm going to read through these just to make sure we have them all. So, this board is a motion. I'll make the motion that we're going to... we do need to do a motion, correct?
Yes.
This is so different. Okay. Make a motion that we're going to send this back to the town board and have the town board address with the applicant the following items. And if they are satisfied, then they should approve it. If they are not satisfied, they should deny it. Those items are the actual placement of the smoker, the effect of the smell on the neighbors closest, the hours of operation of the smoker. Do I address the storage containers? Are they going to remain or be removed?
I think it's a-
Address the... if the storage containers are staying or being removed. There's potential building code issues that need to be looked at regarding the trash enclosure. How will the smoke be controlled? And what type of cover for the smoker is going to be used? And depending on the hours of operation, is there lighting required for the operation? Did I get it all?
Questions.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did I... did I miss one?
What kind of truck are they going to use them? No.
No. I think we're... I'm fine with it.
I feel I... I would recommend that we... the motion is that we send it back to the town and allow them to review these items. And if they're satisfied, to approve. If not, disapprove.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And one absent. Thank you. Is there any other items before the board tonight?
Minutes.
Can we defer those till next meeting?
Sure.
Because I did not get a chance to review them.
Sure.
I apologize. That's okay with the rest of the board? Okay. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.